Good evening, everybody. I call to order the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. The time is 7:33. There is currently a quorum of the Select Board president. We have Mr. Gito, Vice Chair Roberts, Mr. Carrera, and myself. Mr. McCrisky is not able to make it this evening. If you're able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So before we get into the first order of business, I just wanted to give the floor to Mr. Carrera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's with great sadness that I have to do this again, that we've lost residents in our town. And one of them is Ed Peters, a lifelong resident of Stoughton, has died peacefully at his home. He was a Stoughton High class 1971 graduate. He loved to boat, spent time with his family. And Ed is survived by his daughter Karen Brown, who is at the Water and Sewer Department, the Public Works Department. She's a longtime employee. I'm sure everybody's seen her when they go there. They have to talk to somebody, and usually it's Karen. Visiting hours will be held at the Folly Foyle Home on Route 27, November 21st, 2:00 to 5:00. Karen, from the Board of Selectmen to you, we wish you the best and our deepest sympathies. Eddie, I knew Ed. Ed was a great guy, great guy. I know all of Peters' family, Jay, his brother, and his other brother Pete Peters. They're just good, good people, longtime Stoughton lifelong people. So it's a sad, a sad ending, but to Karen, we wish her the best. We have an iconic end to Stoughton. We have the passing of Charles McNamara, and most people know him as Charlie Mack. Charlie Mack was the farmer who was the pillar of the West Stoughton area. They had the most agricultural property in that area. His third-generation farm goes back like over 100 years. Charlie was, he was a tough guy to get to like you, but when he liked you, he liked I've known him for a long time. He is the brother-in-law of Mr. Gito on the board. So to Mr. Gito, his wife, Charlie's daughters and son, especially to his son Lou, who I knew, my brother grew up with. Charlie was, not only did he do the farm and the animals and the selling of stairs, the growing of acres of corn, not just in his own town. He cut corn as far as Taunton. He was doing some in Titan, but he pulled it back. But Charlie was the, he had Country Club Lawns, which was a landscape company that cut lawns. It was one of the first ones in town. But Charlie was the man that was going to tell you how it is, and you never turned your back and ever wondered if that was all that was said, because he'd say it to your face. So he was a really, really, really decent guy. And I'd like to, if his friend Brad Ness is watching, I'd like to say, Brad, I feel bad for your loss. They were inseparable. So to the McNamara family, I send out all our most heartfelt sympathies for Mr. McNamara, Charlie.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
He was my friend for almost eight years, I'd say. Seeing him, a lot older than that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carrera. Our next order of business is Citizens' Comments. Yes, Ms. Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Fox Street. I'm going to have to ask you folks to really lean into those mics, because these are not To echo a previous speaker, we have lost some vital members of our community. One was Harvey Levinson. He was on the Library Board of Library Trustees. He was a chair for decades. He wasn't loud. He wasn't a politician. He didn't bring attention to himself, but he worked very hard with a previous library director to renovate and enlarge our library. As a college professor, he knew how valuable libraries are, especially in this day and age when people have limited funds. The library is the place you go to get the information that you can't afford to get anywhere else. When they enlarged the building, they doubled the amount of computers available to the public. This is vital for our middle and low-income residents. Many of you know that you can't even apply for a job anymore unless it's online. They won't accept resumes. They won't accept personal people coming into their offices. So he helped people in a number of ways, in his own quiet way. The library was able to honor him before his passing. He took his death, he knew he was dying, he had cancer. He wasn't a woe-is-me kind of guy. He even made an effort to visit folks that had, served him in any capacity. We had a mutual hairdresser. And he just came by to say, thank you for your service, and I won't be seeing you anymore. Very calm, very cool. As to someone else, when I was in elementary school, over 70 years ago, McNamara Farms was where we got our milk. This is ridiculous. McNamara Farms was where we got our milk for our school lunches. You got a whole pint in a glass bottle with a little plastic lid, cardboard lid that told you it was McNamara Farms. And I'm sure there's hundreds of people in town that remember that from their childhood. Nowadays, you get a skimpy pint, a half pint, but you got a real mouthful of quality product when you drank the McNamara's Farms milk. Also, Charlie was a mentor to my nephew, who runs my farm, Joseph. Joseph went to Norfolk Aggie, hooked up with Charlie. Charlie taught him everything he needed to know about farm equipment and taking care of animals. He was a real mentor and a friend. When my nephew called me yesterday, he was really touched by his passing. The other thing about Charlie that some of you may not know is, for years, we had a haunted hayride. And the hayrides were provided by the hay trucks or wagons for McNamara Farms. Some years, Charlie drove them. My nephew drove the second one. I don't think Charlie even asked the town or the rec department for gas money. It was just something he did. Children and their families would come from miles, not from just Stoughton, to see a little piece of what used to be America. And we all need to thank him for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. So Select Board comments. Mr. Gito, do you have any comments?
Last week, I mentioned that we had a lot of information from SMAC that we apparently didn't take as seriously as perhaps, at least I thought we should. I thought more about it. I haven't changed my mind. But I went back and looked at what we had available to us and what we were displaying to the town. And I'm going to just talk about the financial information that SMAC provided. We got, they provided 27 pages of information, good or bad. And I wasn't endorsing the information that they provided when I spoke last week. But they provided 27 pages of information on a Form 990. In our book that was provided to us by the town, we saw one page, and that page was I looked on the website, and on the Town Manager's website, it says, "A Table of Contents Broken by Induigiville Files." It shows one page redacted of that Form 990. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that I received information from Town Council that showed in that November 27th, 1994, 2024, a document that was sent to us that there was a lot of information that we had and didn't necessarily see. At least I didn't see it. In that document, there were 27 pages not redacted, including that page that was redacted in both our packet here and in the packet that I got from Zoppo. And that same information, as I said, was redacted in our website. Now, only one page of 27 on both cases. I don't know how that page got redacted. It didn't get redacted by SMAC. It didn't get redacted by Brian, at least when he received it. I don't know whether he redacted it before he sent it to the town. But altering a government document is a crime. That's what it is. I don't know how that happened. I don't know who did it. I don't know who recommended that someone do it or who allowed something to happen. But I want to know that. I plan to get in touch with the Ethics Commission and find out what the heck's going on here. That shouldn't happen. We should get all the information that is available to us, if it can happen, to SMAC. And someone can change documents that are town documents or come to the town. We had asked for information. It's not that the Form 990 had marks on it. It's that, it's not that document itself. It's the whole documentation of our request, that parts of that was altered. I do plan to get in touch with the Ethics Commission and find out what's going on. I don't understand it. I won't sign any document that has a nondisclosure agreement with SMAC. And as I said before, it's not just that particular document. It's the documentation of what SMAC did that got altered when it came to us. So if anybody would like to tell me what's going on?
I would, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I will as well. This is kind of one of the more unusual components of it. Mr. Coulter, go ahead.
I'm understanding the gentleman correctly. He's insinuating someone on this side of that lawsuit doctored documents. Is that what you're suggesting?
I, I got documents from...
We're going to stay away from that.
I just wanted to know yes or no, sir, because I want to give you the pathway in which these documents took.
I'm sorry?
I don't think you're aware of the path that these documents took. They went from SMAC management to their legal counsel, Mr. Zoppo, from Mr. Zoppo to our legal counsel.
I know that part.
And that's when you received them.
That's where I received...
From our legal counsel.
Yeah.
After their legal counsel did what they did.
Pardon, pardon me.
To suggest otherwise is so unfair.
No. I received two sets of information. One from our legal counsel, and I received one from Zoppo that went to our legal counsel.
Okay. So I actually have an answer to this, and it's very unusual. Of all the documents we received, their Form 990 was the only form that their attorneys asked that we not disclose to the public. And it was at their request that these were redacted and that it wasn't provided as a public document. Now, the reason why I say it's bizarre, a little bit weird, is that Form 990 is the only tax return...
It says right on it that it's a public document.
Please allow me to finish my one sentence. It's the only tax return that is, in fact, by default, a public document. And while we were provided the redacted version, I went onto the IRS website and was able to view that Form 990 and every Form 990 going back to the inception of SMAC in its entirety. So it is bizarre that we were asked to not provide a public document to the public. But my understanding is that it was Brian Winters was honoring that request by them. But that form, if you just Google IRS, go in there, look, nonprofit lookups, you'll be able to find it, no problem. So, and altering a government document in this context is, I think, you're going to have a difficult time proving that as a crime, but I'll allow you to do whatever you would like. But that was actually, the reason why it was redacted, was at the request and insistence of SMAC, and that's my understanding, and their attorneys.
Thank you.
And the fact that it was a public document to begin with makes it all the more bizarre. But that is...
Well, that is bizarre beyond bizarre.
It's neither here nor there.
I, I had not heard that. I, I will check on that.
Please do, please do.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
It will happen tomorrow.
I have no doubt. Any further comments, Mr. Gito?
No.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Roberts.
Yes, I have two comments, Mr. Chairman, very quick. Comment number one is to remind or announce everyone about the MMA's Connect 351 Conference, which is January 22nd to January 24th of year 2026. It's going to be, once again, at the Boston Seaport District. I hope all that are interested will register. We're going to have the typical format, keynote speakers and all, but this year will be unique. One of the things that we'll talk about is the perfect storm. Cities and towns are facing historic fiscal pressures, and that is going to be a topic of conversation a lot, and I think you will find this very interesting, and there will be recommendations, and we need a voice from all of you in municipal government. The second is through you to our, Mr. Coulter, is regarding our annual audit results. I would ask that at a future meeting, if we could have a discussion, a presentation and discussion, and through you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, keeping our financials in order is very important, and reviewing audit results, the per usual annual audit results, would be a way of doing so. So thank you very much. Oh, Mr. Coulter?
We'll take care of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Carrera, any comments for this evening?
I just have one quick comment, that we're losing business out of Stoughton, who came in and they were doing real well, and like everything, the times catch up. Big box stores put pressure. And I'd like to say to Mike Hatfield from the Board of True Value Hardware, that we're sorry to see them go. They were very good people. You went in there, they knew a lot. It was almost old-school hardware. And when you walked in, you got to meet Annie the Lab and Inky the Cat in the bucket or the, the box. But to him, he did a good job. He employed everybody from Stoughton, a few of his relatives, and it was family, it was nice. I had a grandfather that had a hardware store in Waldham, and when I walked in there, it smelt like the hardware store. So to him, I wish him luck in his next endeavor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. I don't go to the hardware store very often periodically. I really enjoyed it there. Competition is stiff, but at the same time, they did everything right. Maybe they just, you know, ultimately couldn't compete with some of the larger institutions in this. But it was a wonderful place to go. I've never had anything besides like a really outstanding help from the people there. They're always extremely nice, even if you have, I mean, I'm not as handy as some, so I usually came with very stupid questions, and they never made me feel that there was anything wrong with me. And I really, I really felt good about that, and I love dogs, so I'm going to miss seeing the pup as well. But yeah, it's very unfortunate. They did a really great job.
The nice thing was, when you had a key cut, it worked. You didn't have to go out and, hey, go try it, see if it works. It worked. Thanks.
Absolutely. So we have two minutes before we can start our public hearing. I just want to ask, oh, sorry, I forgot, there's Town Manager comments, I apologize. Mr. Coulter?
No problem, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick comment regarding trash pickup. There'll be no, obviously no trash recycling pickup on Thursday, Thanksgiving Day. We will be picking up the Thursday route for trash and recycling on the following day, Friday, the 28th. And we'll be picking up the Friday route on Monday, December 1st. So just to summarize that one more time, there'll be no pickup, obviously, on Thanksgiving Day. The typical or the routine Thursday pickup will be picked up on the following day, Friday, the 28th. And the Friday pickup schedule will be done on Monday, December 1st. And we'll be posting this on my website, the town website, your website, and every other platform we can think of, so that people have a clear understanding as to the schedule change. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On some days, I cherish that, Scott. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Coulter, before we move on, I stumbled upon something on the town website, this was a little while ago, where you can get, I can get text messages, but they can also send emails or phone calls, telling you, reminding you on a weekly basis that trash is going, you know, is tomorrow. And I should have mentioned this earlier, it'd be great, I mean, this is such a wonderful service, I love it, because back when recycling was not every week. I could never remember which weeks it was and which one it wasn't, and they get a text saying like, trash, you know, recycling's tomorrow, and I'd be like, okay, great, I can do it. It's wonderful, highly recommend it. And with the holiday, I think it was last week or the week before, I got a text on, I usually get, have trash picked up on Fridays, I receive a message on Thursday saying, the trash is not being picked up tomorrow, it's going to be picked up on Monday.
You got it from our DPW.
Yeah, yeah.
We're good, aren't we?
Yeah, so they have this, it's a service that's available. I stumbled upon it by accident on our website, I think it's kind of hidden in there. But I think bringing it to the forefront, putting it on Facebook, I think a lot of people would get a lot of benefit from this. It's, couldn't be easier, just, Thursday nights, I usually get a text saying, don't forget to take out your trash, and I do.
It's wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll talk to Paul in the morning.
Yeah. I think it'd be great for people to be able to use it. And that was my effort to also kill a little extra time. We're now at 8 o'clock. And Mr. Coulter, anything further?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Any of the members of the Board have anything additionally they'd like to add? Okay, we'll move on to the next order of business. This is the public hearing. We have two items, tax classification hearing pursuant to General Law Chapter 40, Section 56, and Item B, National Grid and Verizon New England Joint Poll Petition for Atkins Avenue, Project 31193181. I'm going to pass the gavel to our vice chair, who's going to oversee this portion of the hearing, this portion of the meeting. Please direct all comments through her as the acting chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for our first public hearing, the process will be, I'll read into record the hearing, then I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing, we'll take a vote, we'll hear from our guests, in this case, it is the Director of Assessing, he will present to us, and then we will close, a motion to close the public hearing, and then we will vote on the items that are in front of us. So to shift the rate, open space discount, and residential exemptions, or what they'll be asking. So now, the first step is to read the Property Tax Classification Hearing into the record. The Select Board will hold a public hearing in the Great Hall, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, 3rd floor, Stoughton, Mass., 02072, on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, at 8:00 p.m. regarding the allocation of fiscal year 2026 tax levy among the various classes of property in the town. This hearing will be required by state law, will give interested citizens an opportunity to comment... Will give interested citizens an opportunity to comment on local property tax policy, and it will be applied for fiscal year 2026. All real estate in the town of Stoughton is classified according to use. The allocation of the tax levy may be adjusted within certain limits by the Select Board between the residential property class and the combined commercial, industrial, property, personal property classes. Relevant information will be provided by the Assessing Department at this hearing. All interested citizens are invited to attend this meeting and present their views to the Select Board. And that's signed by the Select Board, Stephen M. Cavey, Chair, Deborah Roberts, Vice Chair, Scott Carrera, Board Member, Joseph M. McCrisky, Board Member, and Louis Gito, Board Member. Motion to open our public hearing, please.
Madam Vice Chair, I move that the Select Board open the public hearing regarding tax classification.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, Stephen, you have the floor.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Dunn. First of all, everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Sorry, that is one no, so you mind bringing the mic just a little bit closer to yourself?
Sure, sure thing. I'm the Director of Assessing for the town of Stoughton. On behalf of the Board of Assessors, this presentation will provide an overview of the property values in town, their classification, and how taxes can be shifted among the classes to fund the tax levy. There we go. Correct. Do you want to run it as a full slide? As like a full? Yeah, I think in the upper left there. It would, no, no, further over. Either way, you can do it either way. So that first page was the tax classification hearing notification. This next page, purpose of tax classification hearing. This page was presented in your meeting packages, so I'm not going to spend much time on it. It's more an introductory page. Basically states the responsibilities of the Assessors' Office to get to classification hearing, and then the Select Board's options as part of the hearing. The next page is the first page of the four decisions that are available to you folks as Select Board Members. These next pages will comment on the four options that are part of classification hearing with the pros or cons to each. First is the residential factor, which shifts the levy obligation within the four classes of property, residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. This year, the shift can be up to 70%. Additional value tax and shift pages of the 2026 information will be provided further in the presentation. Second is open to space discount. I'm not going to spend much time at all reading that number two item. There is no community in the Commonwealth that takes avail of this option. If a property owner in Stoughton has larger tracts of land, they should use the available agricultural or recreational chapter classifications, which offer the property owner significantly lower values in the town's right of first refusal, should the property owner eventually wish to sell the land. There's no right of first refusal if you use the open space classification. And I think the key thing is, is no one in the state uses this option. The next page gets into Option 3. The next possible shift is residential exemption. Of the 351 communities in Massachusetts, 18 adopted residential exemption in 2024. They tend to be with larger number of communities with a larger number of apartment buildings, Boston, Brookline, Cambridge, and Chelsea, for example, or larger number of second homes, Barnstable, Tisbury, Nantucket, communities of this nature. If adopted, the residential exemption would shift the tax burden within the residential class from domiciled to non-domiciled taxpayers. Possible downside of this shift is those that are living in rental housing with non-domiciled owners are likely to have lower incomes than those who qualify to purchase a home. If tax increases for those landlords, it's likely that the increase will be passed along to those tenants. An additional downside not included on the slide is any shift within the residential class would also be borne by the higher valued single-family homes in Stoughton. The next page is the last option that's available under classification, which is small commercial exemption. Of the 351 communities in Massachusetts, only 14 adopted the small commercial exemption in 2024, with all but two having a split rate. If adopted, the small commercial exemption would shift the burden so that qualified commercial in chapter land properties could receive the benefit, but the burden would be shifted to other commercial and industrial properties. The exemption allows for up to a 10% reduction in value to qualifying properties. The downside to this option is that the reduced value in taxes are shifted within the commercial industrial classes, further increasing the tax rate on top of already a determined shift factor. So it's almost getting a double hit there. The next page is documenting how the town is broken up in value for 2026.
Can I ask a question?
Shows you that 80%. Yep.
Yes, Mr. Gito, you had a question?
Are we? Do you want us to hold questions until you're finished, or do you want to?
You can, you're the board, you ask.
No, you have a way that you'd like to do it, and I'm happy to do it however you would like. I just.
It seems like you have a question now.
I do.
Okay, sure.
And if you're happy with taking it, I'll do it. The number three, residential exemption. You say that there are 18 communities that have adopted this. You have listed eight, some that are coastal communities and some that are very large communities.
Right.
I don't have a clue as to what the other 10 are, and I'm not asking you to give me that information. I guess what I'm interested in knowing, however, is, are there any parameters that we should be thinking about in order to take seriously this kind of exemption? I mean, what I see is that we have gone from having very few apartments, large apartment complexes, 20 years ago, to many, many now. And at what point should we be thinking about, well, you know, our percentage is such that it may compete with?
Larger communities. So as I stated in that discussion of that, it's usually the communities that have a large number of apartments or a large number of second homes. Certainly, Stoughton is not a second home community, so we revert back to, do we have a large number of apartments? To give you an example, in what class I looked at was the class 111s to 125. So you're talking four families and up, including the larger projects, the larger complexes that are the 112. It's going to be anything that's a four family and above, which you could have 75, you could have 125 apartments in those complexes in that class. That class makes up 0.835% of Stoughton's parcels. So not even 1%. The city of Boston is 3.22%. Brookline is 1.97%. Cambridge is 3.15%, and Chelsea is 5.15%. So I don't think we're to that point yet. But then again, the other thing that you have to think of is our median value, I'd have to look further down in here, is in the high fives. And if you do that whole calculation of residential exemption, it's probably going to be in the low sixes that is where there's a break even point. So anybody that has a value higher than, say, 615 or 620, you may actually pay higher taxes than you would have without residential exemption. Lower valued properties will get more of a benefit. As you go up the scale to higher priced properties, you actually pay more taxes, the way the system is devised. So I can hear you saying, you know, that we do have a fair amount of apartments here, but it doesn't seem like you're to that level yet.
Thank you. The reason I asked the question, obviously, is that I don't know what percentage of the population is in that category, but perhaps you do. And if you do, that would be helpful to know. But the services that are delivered are principally services that are to people, not to properties. Am I correct or not? I mean, water, sewer, all the things that you do, ambulance runs, you name it.
I think all of those things are actually, if you have 125 apartments, you're getting a large water bill.
Yes.
So you're paying for that.
Yeah.
So whatever your sewer is, you're going to be paying for that.
Right.
I think the thing is, is based on the numbers that I saw on the communities I mentioned, looking back at the apartments, those communities seem to have far greater apartments than.
I understand that.
Yeah. I don't know if.
Thank you. I guess I'll just stop. But I.
This was, I was going to mention, if you want to stop by the office and go over this, I can dive into it in more detail.
We have police runs, fire runs, things of that nature are not taxed. Don't come in on a bill.
You're kind of getting out of my bailiwick, though.
I'm sorry.
When we start talking police and fire runs, that's not what, I don't, I'd have to defer to Mr. Coulter on something like that or to.
Whomever. I mean, I'm just trying to get a sense of when we provide services, what you said is true. I mean, the water and sewer are things that people pay for individually. Police runs, fire runs, and other things are not in that category. The library is not in that category. Mr. Coulter could name 20 right off the top of his head. And I guess what I'm wondering is, when do we reach a balance between what a property owner pays for service and an apartment building pays for the people that they're housing and providing, we are providing, the whole town is providing service for, and they are providing some of that. But is it the right amount? And I don't know the answer to that. Perhaps there's something more to it that you can tell the next board, because I'm not going to be here.
I really, I could go on and on, talking about this.
Don't, let's stop this and move on.
Okay, all right. Here we are with the page, this is the total valuation of the town. Shows the breakup between the residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Next page is 10-year assessed town value of each class. And you can see the blue line, that's your residential. The orange is commercial, the gray is industrial, and the yellow is a personal property. Clearly, the residential is the predominant value in town. It holds the most value in town. With residential going up 91% over that period. Interestingly enough, industrial has gone up 104%, and a lot of that has been over the past few years. The next page gets us into our growth presentation of what we have. Top shows a pretty complex graph of what's gone on for growth over the past five years, broken down by the predominant classes of single-family, all the ways down to personal property. I think that the two things that jump out at me at this is what happened to commercial growth last year, and then this year, what's happening to single-family growth, and also the industrial growth. We were basically almost even as to what we had for new growth last year. I can't guarantee that amount all the time, because a significant amount of it is coming from some of these large industrial complexes that are being built. This next page.
Steve, if I may, while you're on that page.
Yep.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Can you speak to that number a bit? Because although it's reduced by 6%, I think you should talk.
Sorry, Mr. Coulter, you mind bringing your mic with you?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Although this shows a reduction of 6%, 25 versus 26, I think it's important, either you or Biz talk about the makeup of the 1.7 versus the makeup of the 1.6.
Right. It's my understanding that the 1.7 was because of the reduction or the elimination of a number of tiffs. So there was a great deal of value that came on to the town in 2025. That 2026 number is solid new growth in the community. Has nothing to do with any tiff being taken off of a property. That's the significant growth you find out at Technology Way and some of these other complexes.
Sorry, just to make sure I understand this correctly, the 2025 numbers were sort of a one-time hit, which is sort of the unique circumstances. 2026 actually shows, you know, legitimate new growth.
That's legit new growth. I do caution you folks to not think that that's going to be in every time occurrence, that every year I'm going to show up and give you 1.6, because these complexes are fairly large, okay?
Yeah.
It's, we did have a significant increase in the single-family this year, which was great. I think that's an indication that the post-COVID, in the skyrocketing of materials that happened, I think it dampened people's desire to want to put that addition on or do things or build that new home. I think you're seeing us getting past that, and a lot of that is coming on. Because these values for 26, we're looking at actually what happened in calendar year 2024, in that timeframe.
Thank you.
Sure. The next page gets into median and average value changes from 25 to 26. And I show the residential, commercial, and industrial classes. I include in the median value, because I think what's important here is 38% of your commercial industrial classes are supported by 11 commercial properties and eight industrial parcels. The commercial class, just to give a perspective on this, has a total parcel count of 460 parcels, and industrial has a total parcel count of 258. Yet 38% of those classes is being gobbled up by 11 and 8 parcels, 11 in commercial and 8 in industrial. So that's why I'm trying to show the median as to what might be actually happening to those classes. If you look to the far right and you see the industrial increased 23%, it's because you had a significant growth out of Technology Way. And that, when you average that, it kind of can skew that a little bit. That's why I kind of like looking at a median number as well, to give you a realistic view of things. And the next page gives us the average tax changes, which again, I can show you the average and the median and the average. Jill, if you hit hide on that, does that get that little thing away? Oh, perfect, thank you. So this is showing you what is actually happening to a tax bill for residential, commercial, industrial on a median sense, and also on the average. But I tend to not look at that average for commercial and industrial because of what we have going on in those classes right now. The next page shows you comparison of 2025 rates from some neighboring communities. I did add a little. I did add a little bit more information there this year that shows some parcel counts and what their levies might be. I also show below that what the 10-year historical shifts have been in the town of Stoughton. I did take the liberty of including our proposed shift at the very bottom, that the board is proposing to you for 2026. And the next page is-- Yeah, yeah. Yes, please. This next page shows you in great detail what would happen shifting from 1.5 to 1.6. The orange column is, after considerable review between myself, the finance director, and the board, determined that the most reasonable shift for the town this year would be 1.55, which is represented by that orange column there. The next page documents what that would do to an actual tax bill in town. So you can see there, in 2025, an average residential was 6,800 or 6,500 for median, and it will go to 71, 58, and 67, 72. And down below, it does also show what would happen to the average or median commercial and industrial bill as well.
While you're thumbing through--
Yep.
Yes, Mr. Gito.
Thank you. Could you give me any information on the commercial-industrial average and median values in, not in terms of Stoughton now, but in terms of other communities? It seems to me that what you showed is something that probably is occurring in almost all communities. There are some very, very large industrial facilities and very large commercial facilities, but the bulk of them are not Fortune 500 companies, but something else. Are we going to be an outlier, or pretty much in line with Avon, Canton, and so on? Do you have any sense of that? Okay.
No.
Thank you. Well, that's for another day. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Continue.
Okay. So after this page here, we kind of culminate the presentation with the board's recommended--
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairlady, excuse me, Mr. Chairlady. If I may, Steve, can you go back to the previous chart for a minute?
I was going to ask the same, just a little more time on that chart.
Sure.
I see on this one a three-year trend in the tax rate, residential tax rate, commercial, industrial.
Yep.
But do you have any data available going further back? I know all the board members are really interested in, you know, what the tax rate is for town, its trajectory, up, down, flat. I see three years there. It shows that it has dropped the residential tax rate, 24, 25, and 26.
Right.
Do you have the chart available that you showed me the other day that goes back even further?
I do have one that goes back five years. And again, I like to focus on what's happening with the median numbers.
Right.
Over that five-year timeframe, a residential property, its tax bill increased $898 or basically $180 a year. A median commercial bill increased $1,872 or $374 a year. And this is going back to 2022 up to 26. A median industrial property went up $703 over the five-year period, or basically $141 a year.
But Steve, if I may, that's driven in large part by the value, the increased value. The tax rate is something our residents seem to be very interested in as an indicator of managing their tax dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Times the value of the property gives you the taxes.
Right.
What I'm most interested in, if you don't have it, that's okay. I see the three-year trend for residential.
Right.
From 24 to 25, 25, 26, it went down for the past three years.
Correct.
Each year.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that an aberration? Is that a meaningful, long-term trend?
At some point, it's going to turn around. At least they keep telling me this over the past 10 years, that this boom that we're in of value, we all keep hearing that it's got to end, it's got to end. I don't know when it's going to happen. But at some point, when that starts to level off and potentially go down, I've been through two downturns in the time that I've been valuing property. Your tax rate will start to go back up.
So again, I understand the value part of that equation.
Right.
The tax rate--
The tax, to give you an example, the tax rate in 2022 was 1441.
1441.
Right. In 2022, residentially, commercially, it was 2420 back in 2022. But again, values have increased since then. We're still in somewhat, as we saw by that 10-year chart, that value is still in a trajectory upwards. Once that starts to level off, and we still have to spend more money to pay people to come to work here or buy the services that we need to run the town--
I get it.
At that point, it will turn around, and your rate will start to head up again.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Please continue, Steve.
All right. The next page after this, right. Of the four shift options, the Board of Assessors recommends a tax shift of 1.55 and to not enact the other three options. And that is basically my whole presentation. There is one other slide after this here that--
May I, Madam Chair, ask a question?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
So one of the things that I've, when I see a decrease in our tax rate, I'll be honest, I always love seeing it. It feels good to know it's going down, but also, we have to be realistic about what that's actually communicating. Because if we communicate your taxes are going down, that is false, right? So people have to understand that. The important thing is that they understand that there are certain things that a decrease in the tax rate signals. And I would love to hear some of your thoughts. I'll give you mine, and feel free to just tell me I'm wrong about this. But one of the types of things that I think it indicates is, one, that property values are probably increasing, and that typically is a good sign for people. Typically happy to see that the value of the properties are increasing, and this is a very objective way to show that. The alternative is that there's a lot of additional growth in the town that is absorbing more of the taxes, and so your rate goes down as a percent, which is also a good thing, to be able to see new growth, especially in areas like industrial and commercial. First of all, am I more or less right? Also, feel free to say I'm not. But also, are there other things that a decrease in the tax rate tell us about the condition of the town's financial health?
Well, I think that the thing is, is what I find, having been here only six months, I grew up in Dedham, so I'm not a stranger to Stoughton or this area. But I just, I'm amazed at how strategically located you guys are. I think that's a key thing to what's going on in Stoughton. Living on the South Shore, I generally try and avoid going to the city of Boston. But you guys are so close to right outside of that. And I think the cost, if you were to go start going inside the belt of 128, what's it going to cost you to buy a house in there as opposed to outside that belt? I think Stoughton still becomes reasonably affordable for the general public. You know, I don't consider a town like Wellesley the general public. It's just not the average, I think the average state value is in and around the 600s somewhere. And we're, right now, our average value in Stoughton is 606. So you're certainly still affordable to the general public. They're going to want to come to move here. I think they have services here. Their ease to be able to get to a job, I think, is a key point. It was something that I looked at when I bought my house years ago. But I think the point that you also state is that the value's going up, and everybody loves that. Nobody wants to pay more taxes, but unfortunately, that's the nature of the beast, of how the system's set up. It's great that residential value's going up. Commercial and industrial is going up in sectors, portions of it are. Are all the commercial properties going up? Hmm, I wouldn't say that. Are all the industrials? No, because you can see that huge delta between what an average value is and what a commercial value is. So again, I kind of keep leading myself down this rabbit hole of what's going to happen in the future. If I could predict that, I'm not sure I'd be employed at Stoughton. But, you know, I think it's, in the reasonable future, you should see more of the same. I've been doing this for a long time, and they keep telling me that the end is going to come at some point. I just don't know when that's going to happen.
Yeah, I think it's going to come as a big surprise to all of us. Do you mind if I ask a follow-up? So, you know, I definitely appreciate the insight, and I'm not going to hold you to prediction of the future--
Thank you.
--any more than I hold the other man, you know? But I, I'm just trying to get a little bit of insight into, the tax rate is like one number in a formula that requires us to kind of like keep in mind a bunch of numbers, right? The town budget is one of them. It drives very much what has to be pulled in through tax revenue. Then we'll have the property values, that kind of gives us the tax rate. There's a distribution across a couple of different property types, which is the commercial, industrial, personal property, and residential. And that mix can change, so in ways that will drive all of these numbers to change one way or another. And right now, we're really, we're talking about tax rate, and that is, it's sort of like getting, you know, you only hear about blood pressure, you don't hear about anything else, and you're, is this good or bad? Well, sometimes it's, you need more information than just one number. And, you know, based on your examination of all of these different areas of our finances with regard to, you know, tax revenue, I would just love to hear your opinion about, you know, how that, sort of qualitatively, how our community is doing. Are there things we have to look out for in the coming years? Or, you know, some of the changes are driven by our policies. Are there policies we should explore? Or do we just cancel off--
You're going to have to, you're going to have to sign me up to work next to Biz to answer that question. Yeah, that's really, in having been with the town for only six months, I'm not even sure I'm qualified to even start going down that rabbit hole.
Well, I appreciate your honesty. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your answer. I have two questions, and you could probably summarize your response the way I'm going to ask it. Can you please talk to us about the relationship between the value and the rate? So, for example, as the values go up, do the rates go down? So is there a relationship there? And then also, the cost of doing business. So one thing that comes to mind is, I think it's the $25 million bond note for our new south elementary school. Is that baked into the, to the model, so the calculation? And, and so that's more of the cost of doing business? So is that also included in the calculations?
So I'm going to start with the tax rate. It's great everybody's value continues to go up. I guess the fact that you've already bought a property and your value's going up, that's a good thing. Maybe to people trying to gain access to the town, might not be a good thing, right? Depends on which side of the fence you're looking at. And I think the lack of inventory, I think that's across the board, anybody that's trying to buy a property to get into town. So long as that value keeps going up residentially, or keeps going up commercially, depending upon where the shift is and how it's gone over the past years and what seems reasonable, yeah, your tax rate could stabilize, go down a little bit, until the town starts spending more money, for whatever that reason may be. I believe some of that bond is into the 26 budget. I don't believe the whole thing is. As more of that comes on, you know, your tax value should go up, right? Is that correct?
Hi, Biz, can you please introduce yourself and state your title?
Elizabeth Seleski, Finance Director. As we do our budgets and the exempt, tax-exempt bonds come into play, they didn't come into play and won't come into play in fiscal '27 on the new school. So as we do our budgets, a very integral part of how we get to our tax rate. So that's how we build the tax rate, based on budget. In 2027, we have a substantial increase in excluded debt, which is somewhere around $2 million. So that'll be in the next year's tax rate analysis that we'll be doing. And there's multiple factors that go into that. Did that answer your question?
Sure, absolutely, it did. Thank you very much.
Okay.
You answered both of those questions together, cost of doing business and the relationship between the value and the rate.
Yes.
So I got it. So I guess the next question, and I don't know if that question will be regarding new growth, if it's directed at our town manager, or if it would be directed to assessing. So we know that we cannot always count on a substantial increase year over year, but we have somewhat of a gauge, because there's a long tail to--
Absolutely.
To--
Right.
To new growth, right? So when you see someone pull a permit, then that kind of, kind of is the trigger. So who is the trigger to? Both of you? That's town manager and the assessing?
I don't know. I'll take that one.
Okay.
I think that Biz and I have already had this conversation, because we look at that 1.6 number. It's a great number. But we'll have a lot, you know, I can't say how much next year, because part of that, only part of that is, well, let's say it a different way, the Technology Center Drive, that's not completely valued, because as of June 30th, it wasn't finished. So more of that value is going to come on in 2027. 2028's the next question. But I think we've looked at it, and if you go back over history, you're generally collecting $900, a million dollars in new levy capacity per year, somewhere around that. That would be conceivable to see, barring any huge economic change in how things are operating.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. I'm all set. Thank you very much. Oh, yeah, Mr. Coulter.
Madam Chair, I want to go to the Sky House question. Go to the school show. Yes. There you go. I don't, I don't know who can answer this question for me, but in the revenue sheet that we're supposed to sign--
Yes.
There says LA 5 excess capacity is 15 grand, and then it says LXS, LA 5 excess capacity. And I asked this question before, is 822,000 hanging out there?
Right.
Right.
Yep.
Answer me this. We're going the full two and a half on the people, knowing that this money is sitting Is it certified, or are we just going to wait till it rolls into free cash?
Well, that 800 was from 2025.
Right.
Right. And it's my understanding that the reason you had that was because of those, that large amount of TIF money that came into play for 2025. We saw that, that huge increase in the new growth in 2025 went up to 1.7. The 1.6 this year, that's legit new growth, because of what's going on industrial area-wise. But it's my understanding, the best I can answer it, is because of all that additional tax dollars that came on the books, that eliminated the last years of those TIFs, that we got to tax those properties at the full, fair cash value of their property, instead of having that 10% or 20% that was still remaining of the TIF, that got taxed in '25. That's why you have that additional 800,000 that was excess levy capacity last year.
So, can the levy be lowered to take this
You'd have to
Give it back, so it isn't
At town meeting, you'd have to spend less money.
What's that?
You'd have to spend less money at town meeting. So in, last May, when the budget was proposed for '26, in doing that now, and looking at what we're proposing for 2027 budgets, if you want the levy to go down, then it's going to have to eliminate certain things. That's as, I don't know, I don't want to say it, but I'm trying to think of a great word to use, but it, towns are doing that now, but people are losing jobs at that point, or projects that are on the plate.
I'm just trying to find out, we have this money. Is it earmarked? Is it spent? Is it certified? What's going on with it?
The 15 or the 800?
The 800.
The 800, that ship's already sailed. That was not taxed, money that was not taxed in 2025. Can't get it back.
So where did that go?
You didn't tax the public for it.
All right. But it's, is this still showing that it's, it can be used?
No. No, for whatever reason, that form now shows you what is proposed for the excess levy capacity for 2026, which is the 15,000. And it puts on there now, it never, I don't, I can't remember it always being on there, on that form, but it shows you
The only, the only other thing is, I won't be signing this form, because I want to know who's the mayor.
Well, we're going to have to write DOR and ask them to, because it should say Select Board Mayor.
Town Manager.
Wouldn't say Town Manager. Would have to be the elected body that runs the town. Could it be, when you have, there's a different name for a Select Board, it just escapes me at the moment.
Town Council?
Yeah, Town Council. Town Council could do that. But that's, unfortunately, that's what comes out of the state's gateway system. I can certainly reach out to them and make them
I can't, I can't believe that this comes out like this.
Well, I
Knowing, knowing the status of, there's, there's certain towns that are cities.
Right.
And it's mayor.
I would have to say that more of the state is probably Select Board than mayors.
Yeah.
Right? I think we can all agree on that. I'll take that point noted and send an email off to the powers that be that make those forms.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Coulter.
To Scott, we see that on granted applications as well, a signature for the mayor, or a signature for the town administrator. And, and when we ask for guidance, all they say, and it's primitive, Scott, and I agree with you, cross it out and put Select Board, and where it says Mayor. They're very casual like that when it comes to forms. You would think they'd get the forms correct. I appreciate that.
It's the first time
Yeah, but they do give us a remedy.
Ever come in this form, and I've done a lot of these.
Yeah, yeah. I will throw out a little caveat to Kelsey, who's your graphics arts person, or I'm not sure what her title is. But your signatures are not on that form when it comes out of the machine, and somehow she made it look like your signatures were part of that form. I sent it up to her in Adobe Document, and she put it on there, and I couldn't believe it. I thought she did a fantastic job on that.
So my question, Mr. Coulter, does that answer your question about having your signature on this document? Because if we don't get your signature, my next question to Steve, the Director of Assessing, will that delay getting the information over to the DOR? And what does that mean?
Well, I'm
If it's not signed tonight?
I'm hopeful that the other three board members would agree to the Board's recommendation and agree to sign the document.
Okay.
Right.
On a similar note, I actually received an email about a survey. It's a government survey where this exact same thing came up. It's very, I mean, I guess maybe it's more popular than I realized. When I read it, I thought it was a little weird. But it says, "In the survey, we use the term mayor for simplicity, but we mean to describe the top elected leaders of a municipality." I don't know why this is a thing, but, but I suppose it is.
Maybe we'll, we'll have to have Kelsey work on that form better next year. Well, the magic, she worked on the bottom of that to get their signature, so we could have a physical signature.
The form that came to us was from the state.
Correct.
Not internally generated.
Right.
It's repaired internally.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, may I ask Steve one more question?
Yes, you may.
Steve, only because I've been asked this online by a couple of people, and I don't want to misrepresent the question. This is not what the total value of Logistics Park will be. That's not my question.
Okay.
My question is, what percentage of that projected value is in the 26 numbers?
Hmm, I'd give you about 40%.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions from the Select Board to the Director of Assessing, Steve Dunn? If not, we'll ask our citizens? Yes, Mrs. Walsh?
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is an advertised public hearing. Obviously, not a lot of public. In the past, the PowerPoint presentation has been available for people like me. I can't see that. I can't read that. I came to the public hearing, and I heard what was being said, but I would have felt better if there'd been a paper copy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. Jilda, can you please? Oh, you'll take care of it, Mr. Coulter. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from our citizens? Or from the Board of Assessing? I see none. How about online? I see none. Motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Vice Chair, I move that the Select Board close the public hearing regarding tax class.
Can I ask a question before we close that?
Yes, Mr.
I think there, I put a motion up there as to what you guys wanted to do with the shift. You do need to
Yeah, I got that. I'm assuming, my understanding of public hearings is that we have to close the hearing before we can vote on it. We have to deliberate.
Right.
Okay.
So, unless I'm mistaken, yeah, we're going to close it, and then we'll vote on it. But thank you very much. And I noticed the order's a little different here.
So we have a motion to close
Close the public hearing
It was seconded.
Close the public hearing regarding tax
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Public hearing is closed. Okay. The first is the motion on the rate shift.
So I am, just to put a motion out there, and I'm, if anybody wants to, amendment, by all means, I'm all ears. But just to get something on the, on the floor. Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board vote to adopt a split rate for fiscal year 2026 by setting a CPI, CIP, sorry, CIP shift of 1.55. And to also authorize and allow Stephen Dunn, Director of Assessing, to sign the LA-5 online on the DOR gateway system on the Select Board's behalf.
I'll second that. There being none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous decision. Next, Mr. Chairman, did you want to do the next one?
Yeah, I'll do the next, the next few.
Okay, next.
Just want to make sure I got, I think there's a slide that has them all in one place. Let me
Okay.
There we go. So, Madam Vice Chair, I move that we, the Select Board, vote to not approve the small commercial exemption.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, I move that we not approve the residential exemption.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Unanimous decision.
And finally, Madam Chair, I move that we not approve the open space discount.
Second? All in favor?
Did you second it?
I seconded it. You wrote, you said it. In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Unanimous decision. So we covered the residential factor, open space discount, residential exemption, small commercial exemption. And I think that's it for the business of the day. Moving right along to our second public hearing. That's National Grid and Verizon New England Joint Poll Petition, Atkinson Avenue, Project Number 311-93181. Is the representative online before we get started?
Yes, I am.
Oh, thank you very much. So the process will be, first, I'll read the, the hearing into the record, then I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing, and then we'll allow you to present. The Select Board will have questions. Citizens will ask questions. And then we'll close the public hearing, and we will vote, deliberate and vote. So first steps first is to read the notice into the record. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, at 8:00 PM, to consider the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, who are requesting permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Atkinson Avenue, National Grid to install one JO pole on Atkinson Avenue, beginning at a joint approximately 70 feet WNW of the center line of the intersection of Atkinson Avenue and Farnham Road. National Grid to install stub pole P10-84, Atkinson Avenue, Stoughton, Mass, Project Number 311-93181. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, third floor Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass, and/or virtually, and via Google Meets, and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Live Stream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available, available by calling the Select Board office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to gparreira@stoughton-ma.gov, per order of Stephen M. KV Chair. Motion to open the public hearing.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
So this, so this is for installing a stub pole like you had mentioned, and anchor for 10-84. It's to back up pole 10 for some re-conductor-ing we're doing down Farnham Road.
Okay. Can you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jared Aker, representing National Grid at 100 East Ashland Street in Brockton.
Jared is the first name, and the second name was?
Aker.
Aker.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
So, we're requesting this pole as a way to support the existing pole 10, because we're doing some re-conductor-ing down Farnham Road, so we need the added support for the new conductors. So basically, it's just going to help support pole 10 from pulling over.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the Select Board? No questions? Mr. Coulter? Did you have?
Do you want to read in what the, the
Department reports?
Yeah.
Okay.
Department reports. Just so they'll be in the
The department reports, the fire department approved, police approved, public works approved, engineering approved. And I'm just checking once again, I didn't see any comments. There were none. No objections taken from any of the department heads. Motion to close a public hearing was made by Mr. Gito.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion to approve, can I get a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion to adjourn was made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I agree as well. Turn this back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Yes, so the meeting is adjourned. The time is 8:59. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.